All right, welcome, everyone. We're getting convened here at 9:01. Thank you for being here, even if remotely. It's strangely empty gallery today. We're going to start out with a moment of silence. And as we observe that moment of silence, please keep in mind those folks that are impacted by coronavirus, not only those folks who themselves may be ill, but also those folks who care for them and those folks who may have lost or may lose their jobs as a result of what's taking place with respect to the response. If you all would join me for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, we have minutes for approval, January 7th and January 21st. May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second from Commissioner Tobias, to approve both sets of minutes. All in favor of approval, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes unanimously. Now Commissioner Isnardi, we're going to move on to E1, the resolution recognizing March 2020 as Hemophilia and Bleeding Disorders Awareness Month. You have the floor, ma'am. Do we have you back on? Yeah, we have two commissioners appearing remotely by phone or by Skype. So if you bear with us, we may have some technical difficulties from time to time.
Mr. Chair, according to my notes, I have not seen anybody for the resolution outside.
Okay, I appreciate that. Yeah, may I have a motion to table that to the following meeting?
I'm fine.
Are you there? I apologize. Commissioner Isnardi?
Yeah, my connection is a little jolly, but...
No, that's okay. If you'd like, I can have one of the other commissioners read it, just to be safe.
Just for clarity, maybe, you know, so he can hear the resolution. But I really wanted to be there for this, but it's important to her that we approve this at this meeting. That's okay.
Yeah, absolutely. Commissioner Tobias, would you mind? I'm sorry for putting you on the spot.
Yeah, I don't have the text of the...
Let me see if I have a printout of it. Bear with me just a moment, Commissioner Isnardi. Or Jim, do you have a printout of it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got one here, worst case. You want to do it, or you want me to do it?
How would you like to do it, Mr. Chair?
Go for it.
Okay. Whereas hemophilia is a rare disorder in which your blood doesn't clot normally because it lacks sufficient blood clotting proteins, clotting factors, and whereas if you have hemophilia, you may bleed longer, for a longer time after an injury than you would if your blood clotted normally, causing weakness of the voluntary muscles, and whereas symptoms of hemophilia may include unexplained and excessive bleeding, large or deep bruises, pain in joints, and nosebleeds without a known cause. Whereas the Bleeding Disorders Coalition of Florida, BDCF, is an advocacy organization founded by the Hemophilia Foundation of Greater Florida and the Florida Hemophilia Association to be the voice of the Florida Bleeding Disorders community, and whereas the Bleeding Disorders Coalition of Florida has been serving as the bleeding disorders community, has been serving the bleeding disorder community to improve their quality of life by offering programs and services such as a medically-supervised camp, scholarships, advocacy efforts, emergency financial assistance, and educational programs to support healthier and more independent lives. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida does hereby proclaim the month of March 2020 as Hemophilia and Bleeding Disorder Awareness Month. To bring awareness, education, support to those who are afflicted by hemophilia and bleeding disorders in Brevard County and throughout the world, done, ordered, and adopted in a regular session this 24th day of March, AD 2020.
Thank you, Jim. May I have a motion? Motion by Commissioner Pritchett, I'll second that. All in favor of approval? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, there are a couple of items, three items, that I'd like to see continued out, just based on the concerns about folks being able to attend. You know, I've had folks email me and tell me that they were in high-risk groups, and as a result, they're not able to be here today. So I would ask, and I'll just go ahead and list them all, if someone wants to make a motion and combine all of them, wonderful; if not, we can address them individually, that items I1, which is the Find Land Swap, be continued to May 5th at 5:00 p.m., which is a regular meeting; that item I2, which is the Staff Report on Legal Notices, be continued to May 7th, which is a zoning meeting; and that item J2, which is Speak Up Brevard, be continued to May 5th, which is a regular meeting. All right, we have a motion to continue those to the dates mentioned by Commissioner Pritchett. I'll go ahead and second it. All in favor of moving those three items, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, those three are continued to the dates that we specified. I'm going to do something a little different, just based on what we have going on here, and move up at least my board report. If other folks want to wait till the end, they're welcome to. If not, we can address those at the front end. But I've got some items that I did want to discuss here, based on certain things that are circulating. So the primary reason that we've operated with press releases, and that I've been doing frequent Facebook Live instead of press conferences, is to ensure that when we have press conferences, people actually watch them. Secondarily, there's no information that's proprietary to this county. Put differently, the Florida Department of Health, or FDOH, has released and continues to release epidemiological data in near-real time, and both the governor and the president have drilled in CDC recommendations. For instance, I don't even need to read it, washing your hands with warm water and soap for at least 20 seconds, going ahead and using, if that's unavailable, hand sanitizer that contains at least 60% alcohol, staying at least six feet away from others, avoiding large gatherings. These are things that everyone already knows. If we had different or additional information to provide, I would be operating entirely differently with respect to holding press conferences. This is one of those no-win situations, in that if we held frequent press conferences, we'd be criticized for being publicity hounds, but having elected not to parade either myself or others in front of a camera to tell folks what they already know, we now face criticism for that decision. No one in the policy group, and as you know, that includes Brevard Public Schools, it includes the Florida Department of Health, it includes the League of Cities, it includes a slew of staff, no one in that group has ever requested a press conference during a policy group meeting. It doesn't mean that I or the county is unwilling to have press conferences, if they're justified, though. I worry that daily or frequent press conferences would serve to reduce the likelihood that the largest possible audience will pay attention if and when we have a major news conference, when it's needed. Press conferences, in my view, are appropriate for major milestones, not repetitive news, which may be better handled through other means of communication. To that end, I'm not sure what information we can provide to the public that the state and federal governments aren't already providing between the CDC, the president, FDOH, and the governor. And those folks that are clamoring for regular press conferences have, at least the folks that have reached out to me, failed to specify what content or what additional content they'd like from us. The reason is that they're already getting bombarded with the best practices on every channel, every news website, social media, and even on search engines at the bottom. Some have said that other local governments are providing press conferences, as though that's a valid justification that we do likewise. I don't believe that it is. There are many counterproductive decisions that have been or are popular, like smoking. Just because other folks are doing it isn't reason enough for us to do it. All of the policy group partner agencies and the county itself have been working very well with one another. Every motion without exception that's been proposed within the policy group has passed unanimously. I mentioned the content of the policy group. We've also had, I've invited at least one port commissioner to participate but not vote. I've had Colonel Wallace reach out to Patrick Air Force Base, and we've had Patrick participate. I've expanded that recently, to allow for participation by all state representatives and state senators, as well as Congressman Posey. We're doing everything we possibly can. As a heads-up, and I'll let folks know this, and I didn't want to have a press conference about this yet, because it's not finalized, it's not even at the stage where we've had a formal motion made, there has been talk about closing the beaches during the daytime. That's going to be something that's discussed at a policy group call later on today, but no formal action's been taken at this point. If we close it, obviously, there's going to be criticism. If we leave it open, obviously, there's going to be criticism. This is also a no-win decision. So the strange benefit of these no-win decisions is that with criticism assured regardless of what we do, those voting can simply do the right thing without anyone worrying that the best decision is going to result in some sort of criticism. So if we were, and I apologize for saying something that may come across as facetious, but if we were to somehow cure the coronavirus, there would still be folks that say that there's some reason to complain, whether we're costing healthcare workers their jobs or whether we're opposing God's plan, whatever we do with respect to this will be criticized, which is good in the sense, again, that we can do the right thing without having to worry about that criticism. Don, I see you up there. If you wouldn't mind, would you mind speaking briefly as to the county's messaging, of which you're aware, and whether, to your knowledge, anyone from the county umbrella, elected staff or otherwise, has refused to provide an interview or to provide comments to any media outlet?
Mr. Chair, with your permission, if you don't mind, I'll speak from here. I get calls probably three and four times a day from the media for interviews, and I answer all media calls, even answered one at 9:00 last night, asking if we had any manufacturers in Brevard County that were changing their production to produce coronavirus-related materials. So I answer all those calls, whatever time they occur. I've done interviews with CNN, I've done interviews with all the local TV stations, the newspapers, so none of those calls go unanswered.
And to your knowledge, do you know if anyone else, either elected officials or staff members, have had either press conferences or have communicated with members of the media?
A lot of those calls are still filtered through me. I mean, someone will call me and let me know that they've been requested to do an interview, and if they're comfortable doing that, I always give them the go-ahead, and they do so. So I don't know that anybody's denied any media interviews from the county.
I appreciate that. And now my screen says Commissioner Tobias, pardon me, it says Ms. Bentley has a comment, but I'm taking it it's Commissioner Tobias opposing Ms. Bentley today. Thank you, Don.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I had a board report, too.
We can address them now, if you'd like.
Yeah, but I'd like, with your permission, Don.
Sure, please.
First of all, Don, I think you're doing a wonderful job in these tough and trying times, as you always have. And what I've heard, and maybe you can answer this, and, you know, you never necessarily trust what you read in the newspaper, but there was an allegation that one media source was getting information prior to the release that came from your office. Can you, you know, can you address that? And I'm sorry for not giving you the heads-up, but, you know, that article just came out yesterday, and, you know, I hadn't had time to get that...
Commissioner, would you mind if I fielded that one?
You know...
If you want to hear from Don, I'll let you hear from Don.
Yeah, I'd rather, I understand this is a tough position to put you in, Don, a very tough position to put you in, but I, maybe the newspaper was incorrect.
Well, it's kind of a hand is quicker than the eye scenario, so, you know, when you walk out of a policy group meeting and you do a video interview versus sitting down at a computer, writing a press release, that takes a little longer, so that has occurred, yes.
And let me add to that, if I may. You know, I can tell you that none of the information that was released by Don, by myself, or by any other member of staff, of which I'm aware, was embargoed prior to the release. There have been certain things that have been discussed, where there has been an embargo prior to releasing it, and we've honored, respected that every time it's come up. But I'll give you an example, both with Don and another one with myself. We had a policy group call last week, where before I walked out of the building, Don was sitting down with Dave Berman with Florida Today at the entryway, discussing what we had discussed in the policy group meeting, well prior to any sort of a press announcement going out. So Florida Today was the beneficiary in that sense, in that case. We had another one, where we had a policy group meeting, and I met with Space Coast Daily and discussed with them some items before a press release came out. In that case, they were the beneficiary. The idea is not to hold up information, but rather, once something's decided, unless there's a reason to embargo it, to get it out in a timely fashion. So, you know, the fact that it was spun by the newspaper to imply that we were showing favoritism is not the case. I can tell you that every news entity that's reached out to me, at least, I've spoken with, that's Fox, that's Space Coast Daily, that's Florida Today, although they would perhaps have you believe otherwise by intimation, you'll notice they never said that they weren't replied to in a timely fashion by anyone, they just strongly implied that. And the reason for that is because the times that Florida Today has reached out to me, they've gotten responses either within their deadline or within five or six hours. So it's, you know, it's a situation where I think people are looking to cast blame rather than be productive about the issue. You know, I can tell you that no one is being given a heads-up in a means to show favoritism. In fact, when Florida Today asked why I was doing a series of Facebook Live meetings with Space Coast Daily, my answer was simple. And I think actually all of the commissioners were forwarded a copy of the questions and answers that were exchanged with my office in Florida Today. The answer was real simple, it's because they asked. If Florida Today asked, I would have done it with them. If Fox asked, I would have done it with them, but they didn't ask. So the one and only reason, I shouldn't say the only reason, but the primary reason that I've been working with Space Coast Today, or Space Coast Daily as much as I have, is simply because they reached out and asked. Every media outlet that's reached out to me, I provided commentary when they've asked, even Florida Today, when it was clear the commentary that they were soliciting was designed to make the county look bad as opposed to help the public. So with respect to that, I can tell you, I think there was a good degree of misleading that was being done by the paper in suggesting but not putting out that there was some major favoritism shown to one or another news entity.
Mr. Chair, I...
Please.
I'm not concerned with you speaking with only one newspaper or all of them. That is your right as an individual and as a member of the county commission. My concern, and, you know, I think we've, I asked this to Mr. Walker, was that it's not being disseminated all at the same time. So that, you know, that timeline that came up was what's concerning to me. And yes, the number of infections, you know, from seven to eight or five to six may not be that big of a deal, and it's extremely unfortunate, but it may not be as big as something that is really time-sensitive. And I think it's wonderful that you're getting out there and spreading that message. I just want to make sure that that message is spread everywhere in a realm, and I'm just trying to figure out what is different between now and, and again, you can definitely tell that we're following sunshine, because we haven't followed this, but I've never been chairman of this, thankfully. I appreciate that.
If you want, I'll nominate you next year.
Absolutely not, please.
You want to be vice chair next year and chair the following?
I will not accept that. But Commissioner Smith, or former Chairman Smith, who is, is he on the line, perchance?
Commissioner Smith, are you there, sir?
I am.
Perfect.
Yeah, he mentioned, he's gone through trying times during hurricanes, and we never had this issue. I'm just trying to find out what the difference is when Chairman Smith very effectively did it, and so much so that this never came into question, right? And then what's happening now? And is there any way that we can, yeah, is there any way that we can help solve that?
So first, before, and I promise you this goes through your question, before we get into the specifics with that, I want to point out the difference in time that you're talking about, and I could be off by a number of seconds, but we're in the ballpark of maybe six or seven minutes. That's the difference in time between the one Facebook Live that I did with Space Coast Daily that I think preceded a press conference where there was any sort of negative commentary as a result. It was six or seven minutes. The goal was to have everything done contemporaneously. It's impossible, it's, well, let me say, it's highly difficult to time things so everything's done to the same second. If you want, we can try to, you know, sync watches and combine it, so everything's done at the same exact moment. I don't know that that's tremendously important, though. What I can tell you is, in the conversations I've had with Don, Don understands full well, and I have no reason to believe he's doing anything but, sending the press releases to absolutely everyone. There is no one that I'm aware of that's asked to be included on the press releases that isn't getting them. Everyone that's asked to be included on any form of communication that we either directly or indirectly control or influence has been included. I'll tell you, I had a pharmacist reach out to me that wanted to be included in FDOH's messaging. I called FDOH, and they added the pharmacist to that. So there's been no effort to exclude anyone from anything. With respect to what's different now and then, before, let me just say, number one, I don't think there is an issue. I think this is an artificial issue that's created by folks that are looking to chastise elected leadership, that have a history of chastising elected leadership, not just commissioners, but the sheriff, the Florida Department of Health, administrator for Brevard. These are folks that continuously look to cast leadership in a negative role for whatever motivations they have. But I will tell you that at the first policy group meeting that was called for this item, and I don't know that this is typical, I don't know that it's atypical, because I've never served on the policy group prior to this year, there was a motion by one of the other policy group members that all messaging pertaining to the coronavirus, insofar as policy group is concerned, go through the chair. Now, Don and I spoke after that, and we have taken that to mean, and I should say, that passed unanimously. So FDOH voted for it, Brevard Public Schools voted for it, BCSO voted for it, everyone in the county voted for it, including emergency management, county manager staff, county attorney. What Don and I have taken that to mean, doesn't mean that I need to be the one going through absolutely everything and have the words come out of my mouth pertaining to it, but it just means that we need to coordinate so that there are not dissimilar messages that are coming through. The only message of which I'm aware that could be conceived or construed as being dissimilar is there was one item that came through county staff that neglected to include the fact that both the beachside parking and the beachside parks were being closed. I can tell you, I've spoken with Don at length about that. From everything I understand, it was inadvertence on the part of staff, and I'm not upset with staff. I think it was something where they were doing what everyone's trying to do in getting information out to the public that needs it and wants it quickly, and there was a mistake that was made. When I did an interview on that, and I believe when the sheriff spoke about that as well, Fox, for instance, I spoke with Fox about that, I told Fox both the beachside parking and the beachside parks are closed. When Don had sent that press release out, Fox saw it, and I believe Fox got in touch with Don and said, "Well, we spoke with Commissioner Lober, and Commissioner Lober said that both the beachside parks and the beachside parking are closed. This doesn't match." That's the only thing that we've had that's been different, and that's not for lack of coordination. I think it was just an inadvertent error. And again, I'm not upset with staff. Things happen, we're all human. It could just as easily have been me that made the error, but that's not due to a lack of coordination. So I don't know if Don wants to jump in and talk about that more, if you have any other questions.
And I understand, again, as an individual and as an elected official, you can have a dislike, disfavor, vendetta, whatever, against a single media source.
It's irrelevant, though, for purposes of this.
I get it. The question is, and I wasn't there, obviously, during the, the person, I don't need any names, the person that made the motion to elect you to be the individual would, I may not know the answer to this, and though I'm sitting in an attorney's chair, I'm not an attorney, would that individual also have the same disfavor where he or she may not participate with interviews with Florida Today as well? I'm just trying to think of this in someone else's shoes, right?
In all likelihood, yes, but what I'll tell you is, that didn't force a unanimous vote on that. Literally, everyone from every agency agreed that that was something that was wise. The idea, at least insofar as it was phrased, was twofold. One, to better ensure a consistent message, because this is an unprecedented situation. This is not a hurricane. In fact, I would have preferred a hurricane to this, because we would know what we were up against much more easily than something that's fluid and dynamic like a virus. Either the storm hits or it doesn't. It hits in a certain area or it doesn't. Obviously, things get worse from the center. This is totally different. But what I'll tell you with respect to the motion is, the goal was to ensure a consistent message, which largely, I believe, we have done. I think much was made to do about nothing with respect to the one item that had one omission on the part of the county's initial press release. Everything else has been perfectly consistent. And in fact, the omission didn't render it inconsistent, it was simply an omission. Beyond that, there was also a desire that communications come out in a way to reduce unnecessary fear or panic. And I think, given how I've reacted and how I've spoken with respect to the situation, I'm taking it based on how Florida Department of Health relays information to me, how different medical providers, MDs, DOs, PAs, and ARNPs relay medical information to me. It's not something that I'm downplaying, but it's something I'm also not seeking to induce unnecessary panic over, and I believe that was in all likelihood a motivating factor for why they asked to do it that way. There are folks that are on both extremes, some that say we shouldn't have any restrictions, and we should allow people to go out and infect themselves, and others that say we need to lock people in their houses and arrest them if they go out and about. I'm not in either of those extremes. I think we need to take this for how it is and adjust as adjustments warranted.
And, Mr. Chair, I think your goal and my goal are the exact same, and that for everyone on this commission, and probably everyone, hopefully, in the media as well, that we're, public safety is the number-one concern right now. And I'm not a media expert, or even someone that has a decent amount of knowledge, but I'll ask you this, I'll take your word for it. My goal is that the information get out there as objectively and as expeditiously as possible. Objectively, meaning it's fair, it's balanced, I know I sound like Fox now, using the fair and balanced, but it gets to all media sources equally, because, and, you know, Florida Today has two readers. I want those two readers to get the information.
I agree.
My parents read the Florida Today, and I want them to get that information. My question is, is that in your, because you're there, I'm not there, is that what's currently happening right now? And again, I'm going to take your word for this, as the chair, because I know your motivation. I understand that you have concerns with a certain media source, but I know you're a big enough adult to know that this is an important time, that we need to step aside from that at this point.
Let me put it this way, and I'm going to be really blunt about this. I don't like Florida Today. I have objective reasons for not liking them, including their having sought to get advertising revenue from me in exchange for better coverage. I think that's despicable. But nonetheless, as I've told Dave Berman in writing, that's all put aside during the coronavirus crisis. I told him, after this is done and over with, I'm back to my old policy of not communicating and not participating with them. But given the fact this is something we may have people die over, my dislike for Florida Today doesn't trump or rise above my concern for the constituents, the residents, and the visitors in Brevard County. Quite frankly, they're not that important to me, that I would put someone's health in jeopardy in order to stick it to them. I can tell you, everything they've asked me, I've responded to. I have never, at any point in time, directed Don or any county staff member not to participate with them. I don't think I've flinched, coughed, hiccuped, or sneezed discussing the matter with Don. I have done nothing, certainly nothing intentional, to even intimate that I don't want him to provide them the same level of access as every other media outlet. So all I can tell you is, everything they've asked me, I've responded to, everything they will ask me, I plan to respond to. If they ask me to reply in five minutes, then I don't get the email for 10, I can't do what I can't do, but they're not being singled out by any means.
And it's a lot easier for me to play armchair quarterback. I want to, I want to... I want to let you know, though I might not always agree with the decisions that come out of the policy group, I greatly appreciate the effort that you go through in order to be part of that, the many decisions that you have to make on the fly without the staff reports, that staff does such a darn good job. And I'd like to also thank good old Rita Pritchett over there, who's stepped up and been chair, and certainly Commissioner Smith, who has taken that burden on, it just makes me that much smarter for not being the chairperson on this, but I do appreciate the effort that goes in, not only you, but all the other folks on it.
I appreciate that. And I'll tell you, we have a lot of frequent flyers that are there for every single policy group meeting. Some of them have been regularly scheduled, and obviously, that's a little bit easier to accommodate. Some have been done on the fly as the situation's warranted. I can tell you that I genuinely appreciate the other agencies that we work with and staff doing what they do to participate. Frankly, this would be a near impossible situation if we didn't have the cooperation that we do. So I know that there is a lot in one particular media source that makes it look like the policy group is somehow disjointed. I can assure you, that's not the case. If you want to call in, taking appropriate measures to ensure that there's no violation of sunshine, you're welcome to call in as well. You know, there's nothing that prohibits that. Again, if there's a sunshine issue, we'll need to get you to put the phone aside for a couple of minutes, perhaps, as that comes up, which may be the case. But there's nothing that prevents you from calling in, and in fact, if you want to, I encourage you to. All right. Hang on, one sec, Commissioner Smith. We have Commissioner Pritchett first, and then we'll go to you, sir.
I think also we need to get as many people with the information as fast as we can through as many sources as we have, and I like having a single unified subject going forward. So I'm guessing we're working that through. Part of my situation, and this is a different situation, we've never been hit with something like this before. Any other time we've had this policy group together, it's over hurricanes that last a few days, wearing and we're out. And then also, we have a little county manager hitch, Jim, you're doing an amazing job, and the staff is doing a great job. So this has been a little bit different and more challenging. I got a little uncomfortable because I started learning a lot of this stuff on Facebook, and I'm not a big Facebook people, person, and how that happened, I was getting calls from constituents saying, "Hey, I just saw this, what's happening?" And so I had to pause and try to get some information. So I'm not saying I want to hold up time getting it out, but I called Frank on that, and you guys worked that out for me, and I really appreciated that. But here's the thing, guys, the buck stops with us. And I would request that, since we're in a new time, if the policy group's making a decision that typically would be an ordinance, we call an emergency county commission meeting, because I think as far as when we start closing items that everybody's very interested in, I think we need to get together and have that conversation, because I think typically that's what we would have done, and this is different. If this was a hurricane, four or five days. But, Mr. Chair, I'm going to request that maybe as a commission and hear from us commissioners, that we just, on some of these items that are big, you call an emergency county commission meeting, let us come together and have that discussion, because I think that needs to be really well-vented with these five people here.
Because I'll tell you, and I think that's an interesting idea, and if there's not a pressing time need, I don't see that as being terribly problematic, but I'll give you an example. One of the items that was discussed at yesterday's policy group call, and we have one scheduled today specifically to address it later this afternoon, is whether to close the beaches during the daytime.
I think we could throw together within an hour after y'all discuss that, and we could have a discussion, because that would be an ordinance typically, correct?
Ms. Bentley?
I'm sorry, not necessarily. There are special powers for this kind of situation.
Right, but typically, that would have been an ordinance from the board.
Typically, it would.
So I think if we possibly could pull that together, again, if we're on a time constraint, but if we could come together with an hour or two, you still chair this board, too. But I think just the community's expecting us on these big things to do it, that's what I'm hearing from a lot of people. And not that I don't like the policy board, but this group was specifically elected for those types of decisions.
Let me ask you, because the other alternative, again, if we avoid the sunshine issues, if it's not something the board's going to take action on here, what about just having all of the commissioners call into the policy group?
If we were allowed to do that, make it one big board with all of us talking and making decisions, can we do that?
It would need to be advertised and become a sunshine meeting. That takes a little time to get the ad out. It also may create some complications because your policy group is established pursuant to your comprehensive plan provisions for emergency management, and to create a board meeting within that policy group meeting may create a conflict. So input might be one thing, creating a hybrid sort of board in the middle of the comp plan would be a different issue.
What I'm contemplating is not to have the county commission voting in that, but simply to participate just as we would have the state reps and state senators. And clearly, I'm not, and I can't imagine the majority of the other folks, or really necessarily any of the other folks on the policy group, are going to turn around and do the opposite of what the county commission wants. So if they have their input, and their input is in a certain direction, the overwhelming probability is that's the way the policy group is going to go.
You can certainly advertise and do that, but you have cities involved, you have the school board involved. I think you're opening the door to all of them wanting to participate in the same manner, and then you have joint meetings, and it may become cumbersome, and the purpose of the policy group was to move quickly in an emergency.
Would the chair be able at that time to distinguish on something he thought should be called for an emergency meeting? Could he do that?
I believe he could.
So I think I'm just going to kind of put the pressure on you, that if you think it's something, you've got a little bit of time, and you can call an emergency meeting.
Here's what I'm thinking I'll do, and, you know, just first off, I'll let you know, you're probably going to get an emergency meeting or two called, just, you know, full disclosure, full candor. If it's something the policy group wants to do that needs to be done in some sort of a time-sensitive basis, we may have to do it anyway. If it's something that can wait a couple of hours for us to get an emergency meeting called, what I could, and I'm just kind of thinking aloud here at the moment, what I would be inclined to do is to have the policy group phrase any motion absent, absent direction to the contrary by the Board of County Commissioners, and then state what they want. That way, if we don't get a quorum within a few hours, if that's what need be, that's the action that takes place, so that we're not stuck in a position where we can't get three people together.
So you would go ahead and make the motion to go ahead and approve it with?
Right, unless the Board of County Commissioners takes action to the contrary, and then we call an emergency meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, discuss what was voted on, and if we want to veto it, we'd essentially be able to shoot it down by form of a motion and a vote. I see the wheels turning.
I would just like to comment on that one particular instance, because, like Commissioner Pritchett, I get an awful lot of people that have mentioned the fact that we, the commissioners, were elected to make decisions for the county regarding county issues. So I understand what Ms. Bentley is saying about we would have, we would likely have city folks and school board members that would like to attend or make a part of the decision-making process, but they weren't elected to make county decision-making, made decisions. The county commissioners were, so we, but I understand that we have an issue with sunshine, so that makes it very difficult. And I'm just telling you what people have been telling me.
I think Commissioner Pritchett's idea is a good one, as long as it can be flexible. So if we have to do something immediately, we can still do it, but if it can wait, just to ensure that we don't try to convene an emergency meeting and have an issue getting people here, and I don't think we will, I think that's the way to handle it. And, you know, I don't know if you have a, I don't even know that we need a formal motion with this, because I'm happy just to take it under advisement and essentially to direct that any motions that we have that really are of any substance on the policy group calls be phrased such that absent action or decision by the Board of County Commissioners within X number of hours, we can say, you know, depending on what the issue is and the timeline is, three hours, six hours, whatever the case may be, that XYZ, whatever the motion may be.
That may be one approach. The other could be to defer the vote by the policy vote board to allow you to get an opportunity to get to the Board of County Commissioners and then come back to the policy group. It's a pretty...
Problem is, it takes longer.
Well, I mean, it's just an option. It's slightly cleaner because it's not voting contingent on another board's action. You could get input either way.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. Again, depending on what the time factors are, we could go either way. I'm inclined to do the former, and I'll just tell you again, with respect to the proposal that we shut down the beaches, we've not had a formal motion, what I've asked to have happen, and I can't recall if this is offline or online during the policy group calls, because we don't have the same sunshine concerns that we do here amongst the policy group members. I've asked that the League of Cities reps speak with the other municipalities prior to making that motion, because I don't want one or two cities to drive the bus on a countywide policy. So the reason that we have the call today and we didn't vote on it previously is because I'm not comfortable, and I don't know that other folks were necessarily thrilled with the idea that West Melbourne and Cocoa Beach, that those two municipalities, which have the primary and the alternate for League of Cities and the policy group, that they drive the bus for everyone. So when they come back tonight, if they come back and say, "We don't want it closed," that's the answer. If they come back and say, "We do want it closed," then that's fine, we can go ahead and convene an emergency meeting of the county commission, and if we don't disagree, we won't take any action. And if we do disagree, we'll have a vote and we'll override it.
Okay, good, because I think on these types of decisions, that people are holding us accountable, and I really would like to hear from everybody on this commission. I think that's important to me, because I trust you guys, so.
Yeah, no, I'm happy to do it that way. In fact, it's cleaner for me because I can share the blame and share the criticism with more people, so I'm happy with it. Commissioner Smith, did you have anything else, sir?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Please.
First, I'd like to ask Logan if there's some way that he can get my sound to be louder. Every other time I've called into these meetings, I have no problem hearing. I've got my speaker on, and I can still barely hear the conversation. So Logan, can, is there something you can do?
We'll pump it up a little more, one sec.
Just keep it below the earbleed level, please.
That's better. Commissioner Loeb.
Sure.
Several things that have, I got a bunch of notes here, so it may be disjointed, but as you mentioned, the criticism that you were receiving and other folks were receiving, and I tell people all the time, that at any one time, 50% of the people like me and 50% of the people don't like me. And two weeks from now, the 50% of the people that liked me before may be the ones that don't like me. That's just part of what we get, and that's what we signed up for. So I sympathize with where you're coming from. One point that you had made was that the governor and the president have been giving updated info, and you didn't think that you had really anything to add. I would disagree because local people want to know what the local perspective is, and only you, being the chair of the policy board, can do that. So I would like to make a suggestion, good, better, and different, it's your call.
Yes, sir.
But if you and Don walked out of the policy group meeting and made a brief statement to any of the news folks that want to be there, whether it's Florida Today, or WMNB, or whoever, let them know that you're going to do that and have a five-minute presentation as to what was discussed. Then the local people would be informed and knowing what went on and what is going on, because otherwise, they're in the dark. They don't know that nothing's going on, because they're not hearing anything. So that would be my suggestion to solve all this fatheral, and it would be very simple. You walk out of the meeting, you say, "This is what was discussed," and then you can go to any outlet that you want, or don't go to any outlet you want, and I don't think you would be receiving any criticism at that point in time.
Let me make it real simple. I think that we've got, that's actually an easy answer to it. What we'll do is, starting today, when we finish the policy group meetings, and what we're starting to do now, I was going to the bunker at first, but I don't want to pile too many people in the same room, so I'm doing it remotely now for the most part. I'll do the policy group call from the Government Center here in Viera. We've got a four o'clock policy group call. After that, we'll put together a little mini press conference. I'll reach out to Florida Department of Health and see if I can get Anita Streml, who's the number two, to come over as well, since I don't think they've put together a local release to be available for questions. I believe that Maria Stahl is still self-isolating into this weekend, so I'll see if I can get that for this afternoon. Should not be a huge problem, and then we'll just continue doing it that way. But, you know, I can tell you that the press releases that have gone out, and Don can give you more stats than I can on the exact number and times and who the recipients were, I believe it was a pretty wide net, though, you know, they've made reference to the fact that we're taking the actions that we're taking. You know, we've, in the past, in the policy group, one of the things that we voted to do was to adopt FDOH and CDC guidelines, and in the event that there's a conflict, and we've had that already, where one was more stringent than the other because one of them had yet to update, we'll adopt the stricter of the two automatically, so we don't have to have a vote. If they say, "Okay, you know, groups of five or more are now large groups," or "Groups of 20 or more are now large groups," we automatically adopt that now. If they say, "Okay, well, 20 seconds with warm water isn't sufficient, you need, you know, 30 seconds with 114 degree," all that's automatic. But I agree, you know, to get back to it, I agree. I think that's a really good idea, actually. It's probably one of the better ones I've heard in the past while in terms of communication strategy, just to have something right after each of the policy group calls. So whoever's there is there, and whoever isn't there isn't there, and that's on them as to, you know, their availability and their interest in covering it. But I like that better than doing a slew of press conferences. I think the press conference idea, you know, with us just literally parroting back state and federal guidelines, I don't know that there's a huge value, but like I said, starting today, we'll go ahead and do that, probably around 4:30. They're usually taking about half an hour, you know, 40 minutes, depending on the topics that are discussed for the policy group calls. So roughly 4:30 or so, we should have our first one, and I'll do that here in Viera in Building C.
Commissioner Loeb?
Please.
Or Chairman Loeb, sorry. And again, I totally get leaving politics out of a disaster, but if we learned anything from the last hurricane, we need better messaging coming out of the EOC. I'm not sure how you handle that. I'm not sure. I know you said, and I don't know what led up to the discussion that ultimately left you as the spokesperson. We need the director or the public safety director to be the one messaging. I know Don Walker is a public relations, if it's him, so be it, but we don't want to be in the same situation we were last time.
I understand.
And I'm not sure, you know, again, this was the post-action review the last time, and we're falling into that same sort of behavior, and, you know, I've expressed it, and, you know, I plan to speak with the manager about it here shortly. I don't want us in the same situation again. I thought we learned better from the mistakes of last disaster that we were going to have better messaging coming out of the EOC.
And Commissioners Darnity, I'll tell you, that may well have been another reason that we had the motion, that we had to have one person in charge of essentially vetting the message.
But if we don't want the EOC, or the director, or whoever represents the EOC to give that message, then we have bigger problems. Because in actuality, I know you're the commission representative, it should become, it should come from an administrative type of non-political, non-bias, very methodical, based on the information that they've collected. That's all they do. So that message needs to come from the county staff. I mean, even though, I know you're trying to disseminate it, and we're ultimately answerable for the decisions, that goes without question. I mean, I agree with Commissioner Pritchett wholeheartedly. Ultimately, the buck stops with us. But if our management, if our management is not relaying that message, not everybody's on Facebook.
Right, I agree with you.
You know, if they keep saying, "Where's the county? Where's the county staff? Where's the county EOC?" We need to fix that. So in your policy group, I want you to stress that you at least have one commissioner who's very frustrated with the messaging coming out of the EOC.
Okay, I can certainly do that, but I will point out as well, because I think there's a little bit of a disconnect in terms of what's actually going out. Don has put out a tremendous amount of information.
Oh, absolutely, and I think he's done a fantastic job. I do. But he is not in the leadership role as far as what decisions are being made at the EOC.
My understanding, and if the board has a different direction they want to go, you know, I'll support whatever the decision is. I don't have a strong preference any which way, as long as I understand what it is that's desired. Don is the communications director for the county, has been essentially the public face in large... for the county, has been essentially the public face in large part for the messaging that's been going out on an ongoing basis with respect to this particular issue.
Well, he should be standing at that podium with the Director of the EOC, bottom line. And I've said that from the beginning, and I said that in the last disaster, and that just doesn't happen. I'm not sure why. So we need to fix that.
I'll talk with Matt Wallace. I can tell you that I've had some communications with him that Don's aware of as well, to better ensure that our messaging is consistent. There've been a couple of issues that have been brought to his attention, one of which I know he's already worked on, and the other of which he was just advised of yesterday night after I found out. I'll have a conversation with him, but I think it may be best if you don't want it to be Don that's doing the messaging, that it come from Colonel Wallace.
No, I think, I think Don is the perfect guy to do the messaging. Don't misunderstand what I'm trying to say, and it's difficult when I'm not there in person.
No, I apologize.
I think, but Don Walker is only going to take the direction he's given. So he can give the best message possible. He just needs that message. And I think he does a fantastic job of getting messaging out. Don't, I think he is the perfect person in that position, and I think, I think he does it in such a way that makes it understandable, that makes it relatable, and that gets it out there as much as he can, but he can only take what's given.
Right, and that makes sense. And I apologize. I think I was getting a different feeling from what you were initially stating.
Oh, no. I think Don Walker is fantastic. I mean, I'll never, I'll never say an ill word about him. He's done a fantastic job.
He's blushing.
But, but I think that he needs, I think he needs more. He needs more from the EOC.
I'll get in touch with Matt Wallace and with Don and with Kim as well, and see if we can, we can address that to a greater degree.
I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. All right, so we'll go ahead. We're going to keep moving on through here. Take a look. So just a housekeeping matter before we move on. May I have a motion to waive our ordinary procedure requiring members of the public complete pink comment cards? All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Pritchett. I'll go ahead and second that motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, passes unanimously. So for the folks that are watching this from other areas, if any member of the public wishes to make public comment, please let one of the staff members at one of the sign-up tables outside of the Commission Room know. They'll take your name and either your address or your city of residence, as well as the item number for which you wish to comment. And for the benefit of the Commissioners that are appearing by telephone or remotely, if you guys have visual aids that you want to present to the Commission, please do the best you can to describe them verbally so that everyone's on as good of a page as possible so that we're all voting based on the same information. So with that said, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Would anyone like something pulled from consent? Commissioner Tabia?
Mr. Chair, can I reserve the, I had a board report, not just a comment on yours. Can I reserve that till the end?
Yeah, absolutely. Anyone that wants to give a report at the end of this, you know, certainly they'll be permitted to do so. All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Pritchett, a second from Commissioner Tabia.
Mr. Chair, sorry.
Please.
I don't have a button. We have a speaker card for item F-17.
We have F-17, a speaker.
Thank you.
All right, so Commissioner Pritchett, hopefully you'll be okay if we amend your motion to pass Consent Less F-17?
That would be wonderful, because I wanted to say some nice things about those guys before we moved on.
Perfect. Your second stands, Commissioner Tabia. All right, perfect. We have the motion and the second to approve Consent Less, item F-17. All in favor of approving Consent Less F-17, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, passes unanimously. So let's see, F-17. All right, who do we have for F-17? Yes, sir. Oh, good to see you, sir.
Mike Bramson, Altamont Springs, President of Brevard County Firefighters Union. Speaking on F-17, obviously, sort of anything that has to do with moving forward with the fire rescue.
Hold on one sec. I don't think that microphone's on.
Is it not on?
We'll have, let me restart your time.
I can be louder if you want me to.
Do we want to have him come up to the?
You can bring this one up to the lectern, maybe. That would help us.
Yeah, just stand about, you know, six inches behind that. That's close enough to six feet. I'll, you know, I'll assume the risk there.
Yeah, I'm all right.
That's what they all say.
They do.
How about here?
No, you get closer. Come on, you're fine.
I don't know. I don't know the rules. There's so many rules.
You're fine. We're not going to pick you out.
All right, excellent. We're here to support this and a couple more that are going to come up in the next couple of, one of these meetings. This one is specifically towards allowing the Fire Rescue Department to support the brothers and sisters of the Fire Department towards a career ladder, something we've discussed in the past, to allow them to get the certifications that are going to be required for promotion opportunities and an investment in the employee. I know right now it's kind of a hard line to draw between now and the future, but we feel that what these type of proposals, and they usually are just accepted, but what these do is create great confidence and investment in the Fire Department. And I wanted to take the opportunity to express my appreciation and the union's appreciation and the Fire Department's appreciation of continued consideration for all these type of proposals, funds to be spent towards career ladders, certifications, education, and to bring the Fire Department to where it needs to be. And I'll reserve the rest of the time for any questions you may have on this particular item.
I appreciate that. I'll jump in, although I see a, an indicator here. Commissioner Pritchett? All right, thank you. You know, I'll tell you, I apologize that situation, the situation with respect to this virus has come up as it has. I think you guys almost certainly would have, in a more timely fashion, had your salary concerns addressed at least to a degree. All I can tell you is that once we get this past us and we know what our resources are, we're going to be in a much better position to do something to help you guys out with, by way of addressing the salary issues and the overtime concerns that you have. I can't tell you to a certainty it's going to get you everything that you're looking for, but I think we can at least bridge the gap, if not do even a little better than that. And I, all I can, you know, all I can add to that is, I give you my word that when we're past this situation and we have the ability to do something for you all, we will do it for you all. I don't want you to think that we're using this as an excuse not to help you guys out and not to do what we really ought to be doing to better ensure that we have that retention that we're lacking at this point. So, you know, just understand, I appreciate your working with us, and we will absolutely work with you. I can tell you, I will absolutely work with you and go to bat for you guys as soon as we get through this and we know what we have. Commissioner?
Yeah, I want to thank you guys for all you're doing right now. It's such a tough time with the community, and I really appreciate you guys just kind of putting this on a hesitation right now with that sensitivity to the community. I think it means a lot and says a lot about the quality of you and the people that work around you, and I just appreciate it so much. And I'm hoping you don't get called to the front lines here a whole lot. I hope this thing kind of goes away pretty quick, but I just wanted to really thank you, all of y'all, for all you're doing.
Any other concerns, questions, comments, criticisms, praise?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I would like to piggyback what both of you have said. I want to thank the firefighters and our other first responders for their service to our community and always being there when our citizens need them, especially in these trying times. They don't, they don't take their personal issues with them. They go out there and first and foremost, they're there to serve the public. Doesn't matter if their child is sick, or they're having marital problems, or money problems. All of that is put aside. So when they walk out the door, they're 100% behind serving the public, and we can't thank them enough.
And I'll just put out there as well, and this is something, I don't want you to make more to do about it yet because we don't have a formal motion that's been proposed to the policy group, but one of the things that we've discussed, if this coronavirus issue becomes more widespread in the county, which in all likelihood it will, is what we can do governmentally, through our partner agencies as well, to try to help you guys do your job more effectively or to reduce some of the concerns that might keep you from your job. One of the items that's been discussed is whether we can provide, at least to a degree, childcare services for the first responders and for the ER staff. And one of the ideas that was floated by was using the county libraries, closing the libraries down, and using BPS employees, so the public school system employees, who are already trained to watch kids, watch kids in the county facilities. There are some concerns that were raised with respect to that, but I think if we get to that point, that may be something that at least I push for to hopefully help you guys out a little bit. Commissioner Pritchett?
If it's the Brevard County schools, that would make a lot of sense.
Yes, yes.
If the teachers can do it in between. But just throwing this out, the daycares are remaining open, so I just want to throw that out. That's actually a business out there in the public sector, and they're going above and beyond all the daycares that I'm watching, and really trying to take good care of children in a safe environment. So I do know there's a lot of those availabilities still, but there is a couple that have been closing. I've been getting calls because of lack of participation. So I just want to throw that, because there's a lot of people losing jobs right now, and so they might want to go apply to daycare if they're in good health. So just throwing that idea out there.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to public comment. I see that we've got, it looks like, three speakers. So if everyone that comes up would please just give your name and your address. You know, sometimes I read it into the record, but I don't have anything from which to read. So I'm not going to start your time until after you're done with your name and address, given the pink card situation. Help me out with, oh, thank you, yeah. All right, clerks to the rescue. May we have a motion with respect to F-17? All right, we have a motion approved by Commissioner Pritchett, a second by Commissioner Tabia. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. That was a good save. Appreciate that. All right, public comment. So who do we have first? Mr. Tovey?
Charles Tovey, 2555 Roberts Road, Melbourne.
Hang on one sec. Logan, can we get the audio up on him before I start the time? It's just a little low. Can you try again, sir? Thank you. Sir, I apologize. If you try once more.
Charles Tovey, 2555 Roberts Road, Melbourne. And I really don't need a microphone, but other people need it, and they don't follow their own cleaning, the issues to contain the virus. And if you don't wash your gloves every time you touch something, then you're just transferring the germs one from another. And it looks like the bathroom is in need of sanitation, and anybody goes into an infected area, regardless of its sanitary here, it doesn't mean it's going to stay, and they don't follow their own suggestions of keeping healthy. And just like AIDS, we didn't legalize having sex with people, we educated them. And just like God, if I don't wash my hands, then I'm gonna, I have faith that there's a virus that could kill me, and it's a good thing that I wash my hands and take my own hygiene. Well, well, I want to say about the algae blooms, the months that they come, and this is one of them, when there's no rain, it takes a couple of weeks for the water that everybody's watering to keep their lawns nice. Takes about two to three weeks for that to reach the river, and you can't contain it in a river. And education of the lawn fertilization program and disease in the lawn will help that. But I have a holistic and environmentally friendly way of doing it, and that leads to the filters that they're putting in to absorb the nitrate and chemicals. And I want to, haven't had time to look at them, but they hinder the exchange of the marine life going to and from. And these have spawning areas that they go, and if they hit a filter system, they're not going to be able to spawn. And this is part of the problem with the lagoon from the past. The other thing was about aerial spraying. I've noticed that I still have mosquitoes, but the bees are falling out of the sky, and the dragonflies are no more, and there's nothing left but mosquitoes. Wondering what kind of spray that they're using. It's not very effective, but it kills everything else but the mosquitoes. A community bulletin board. If you guys could get a website, maybe, that would be friendly to the sunshine law, which is broken at times, especially when they have the little private conversations in the back there or on the side panels. I don't know what you're talking about, but the public needs to know, and they need to have their public comment reserved, whether there's a virus, or hurricanes, whatever. Public comment is in the Constitution, I believe, and that's the other issue. We're breaking our constitutional rights for other people's safety, and I don't see it in a Constitution where our constitutional rights are voided because of safety. Thank you. Have a nice day.
Thank you, sir. I do want to comment real briefly on the sunshine item. I don't know who specifically is being referenced, if it's one or more Commissioners, but, you know, just to put everyone on the same page, there is no sunshine issue with Commissioners speaking about items that aren't Commission business. I've spoken with literally everyone up here on topics ranging from dogs to their family, to the weather, to their travel plans, but I've never spoken outside of a duly noticed meeting with another Commissioner during the time I've been a Commissioner about Commission business, certainly not about anything that's remotely likely to come up before the Commission in the future. So if you've seen us talking, all I can tell you is perhaps it's just us being social. In all likelihood, that's really all it is. If staff members are talking, there is no sunshine issue with respect to staff speaking amongst themselves. But, you know, again, I don't know what was being referenced with that. I just want to clarify that. Welcome, sir.
Hi. I'm Pete Connaughtal from 1910 Independence Avenue. That's in IRCC Melbourne. As usual, I represent myself, and I go through my usual warnings in terms of IRCC needs a right-hand turn lane off of eastbound Viera Boulevard onto Independence Avenue into their backgate entrance. It's only a matter of time, not if a rear-end collision occurs. Also, pedestrians, bicyclists, golf carts, travel the sidewalk, which are not visible from the road until you are right at the turn. And they do not stop for cars, which leaves the residents with fear of hitting someone. The short entry before a gate is another reason why the cars making the turn have to slow down. They wind up slowing down below 10 miles per hour and sometimes have to stop because they spot somebody that is crossing, making the turn. This, of course, creates a problem where you now have a car stopped in the middle of a lane on Viera Boulevard, which has caught ongoing traffic at a decent speed, especially since we now have added the traffic that is coming in off of I-95. On another issue, we have IRCC, Heron's Landing, and Faith Viera Lutheran Church could use a traffic light on the corner, same corner, where Heron's Landing and the IRC exit into Viera Boulevard. There is a parallel road from the Faith Viera Lutheran Church along Heron's Island, leading to the Heron's Island landing exit. That makes it usable, especially for the left-hand turn lane. The third basically area is a pathway over I-95. A long Viera Boulevard is needed to accommodate golf carts in order for the residents of East Viera to have access to the businesses on the west side of I-95. The elderly who no longer drive cars, and the schoolchildren who used to be able to take their golf carts or bicycles to school, now lack a legal pathway to accommodate the size of walkers, bicyclists, and golf carts at the same time while trying to cross over I-95. In addition to that, we have passed a law that makes it illegal for them to actually cross over, all of which existed prior to the new exit created for Viera Boulevard off of I-95. And if we were to look in the parking lots of the schools, we would notice that there's nine million golf carts, which means the people that are leaving on that side of I-95 are able to use their golf carts. The people on the east side of I-95 cannot. That's a division that we're making within the community, which should not be. A method to be used over or under or whatever.
Sir, I apologize, but I have to give everyone the same amount of time.
Okay. I did, I had almost finished with the sentence.
I apologize.
Okay.
You know, I'll usually let people finish their sentence, but, you know, that's truly it. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Go ahead and recess for about five minutes so I can take a comfort break here, if that's all right. All right, we'll reconvene at about 10:15, if that's all right.